Good afternoon.
Would like to welcome you to the October State Board work session will now come to order. Denise, will you please call the roll?
Yeah.
Yeah, hello. My button was covered with wires, sorry.
Patsy Coadjohns?
Yes.
Rachel Wise?
Yes.
John Whitzel?
Yes.
Molly O'Halloran?
Present.
Patricia Tim?
Yes.
Maureen Nichols?
Yes.
Patrick McPherson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bloomstedt?
Yes.
All present. Thank you. Information regarding the Open Meetings Act is posted on the east wall of this room on the south side of the door. Live web streaming will be available through the State Board of Education website, www.education NE.gov/StateBoard. And I'd like to ask you to please engage your microphones before speaking and to turn them off when you're finished. And please turn off any personal cell phones. We're going to adjust the agenda just a second here. We will, we're going to move our presentation with our Teacher of the Year up just a little bit. But first, we're going to go through the Commissioners' Report, the Consent Agenda.
Yeah, so just a reminder of the Consent Agenda items, that you can fill out the pink slip if you had any questions or items you'd like to have considered separately from the Consent Agenda. I'll also just hit the rules. There are just two rules that are up and off the top of my head is 70 and 71. I might have that wrong off the top of my head. But those two rules that you approved last time regarding the VR are actually in front of the Governor's Office right now. So that's my quick review. I think it might make sense to go ahead and have Amber go if she's ready and able. And Ryan gave me permission to insert that change right here before he goes. So great to see Amber.
It's so nice to have you.
Nice suit.
Thank you so much. She dressed for the occasion.
I did. I decided to wear my flight suit from Space Camp today to represent some of the lessons that I've been able to learn this year. And I'll share those specifically towards the end of my little presentation here. If I can get that up.
Hit the consent button.
Got it. Alright, so the last time I was here to share with all of you an update of what I've been doing as Teacher of the Year was in May. So I wanted to pick it up there and talk about an event that I attended shortly after that meeting, which was up at the Omaha Storm Chasers game. They had an evening that was devoted to representing teachers and thanking them for their dedication to students here in Nebraska. So I was able to represent the teachers there with the I Heart Public Schools campaign as well. In June, I represented the teachers in our state to the Education Commission of the State's National Forum in San Diego, California. And this event was new for me, a very new experience, because a lot of the conversations were not among teachers or people who were in the classroom every day, but were among policymakers, state representatives. And I was able to have different conversations than I had previously had about education. And one of the lessons that that experience really taught me was that teachers have a different perspective to bring to the conversation about education policy. And I really strongly believe that we have a responsibility to take a seat at that table and to engage in those conversations. For example, one of the conversations I was able to have was with Senator Morefeld, who was in the previous picture with me. He had a lot of questions about some state legislation that was coming out about third graders and reading, and what does this actually look like in the classroom and to teachers? And because I don't have very much experience at the elementary level, I was able to connect with, I sent out one message to all of the State Teachers of the Year for 2017, and within 10 minutes I got about five responses from teachers across the country who have legislation in their states about literacy and third grade reading levels. And I was able to share that with him just during our little short conversation over some tea in the afternoon. So it really showed me that this network that I've been able to build up this year with teachers from across the country, but also people within the state who I wouldn't have had contact with otherwise, have been really meaningful to me personally, but I hope have also impacted teachers and students that I wouldn't have been able to impact otherwise. July was a really big month for me. I was actually only at home with my own family for eight days in the month of July. It was a lot of travel, which was amazing. And I'll just share a few highlights. I was chosen as one of five State Teachers of the Year to participate in the Comparative Cultures Experience through Education First. And we went to Helsinki, Finland, and Milan, Italy, to learn about their education systems, the choices that they make in their classrooms, how teachers are trained, and how teachers are supported throughout their careers. And on the right side of the screen, you'll see an article that was online that kind of quoted a few of us and our experiences. And I was highlighted in that article. So if you have a desire to, please look up that article and read more about our experience. That I don't have time to share all of that with you today. But my big takeaway, as it says in this article, is that Finland does a really great job of empowering teachers. They find research-based instructional strategies and say, here, try this. Take it to your classroom and tell us how it works. And if things work well, then they try to spread it to other schools and other students and other teachers. And I think sometimes, at least in my experience, teachers are afraid to try new things because they're so kind of bound by, I have to get this done, and I have to get this done, and the way I've always done it seems to work okay, so I'll just keep doing it the way I've always done it. But this kind of opens the doors to, let's try something and see how it goes, and we're going to take risks, and we're going to be innovative, and we're going to try new things. And it was really exciting to me to hear some of those things that they were trying in their classrooms. From Finland, we went to Milan, Italy, where I, it was a dream to meet Anthony Bourdain's, Anthony Bourdain, who is a celebrity chef. And he had a little session. It was a conference of 2,000 students and teachers and a lot of different folks. But this was in a smaller setting with only about 200 to 300 people. And I was able to actually ask Anthony a question about how he engages people in conversation. And if you have watched his show, he does a really great job of asking questions that get people to tell their stories. And I wanted to know how he decides what those questions are. And so that was a really enlightening experience to me. And I feel like some of the skills and the feedback that I heard from him and other conversations that I engaged in throughout the experience have led me to be better equipped as an instructional coach, as I engage teachers in conversations and try to get them to own their stories. When I returned from Italy, I got on another plane and went down to Alabama to Space Camp. And I was born the year that the movie Space Camp came out, but I grew up watching it and dreaming of going to Space Camp and accidentally being sent to space. So this is the fulfillment of a childhood dream. And sometimes, when you have a dream and then you actually experience that dream, it doesn't live up to what your expectations were. But this experience absolutely did. It was everything I could have wished and more. On the right, you'll see us pretending to be in zero gravity. We did not have the opportunity to actually be in zero gravity. But I do think that the 1/6 gravity chair that mimics walking on the moon was a similar experience. I didn't want to share the video of me doing it, however, because it's kind of embarrassing. So one of the lessons that I learned at Space Camp that has carried over directly into my work in schools is teamwork. We were split into teams, and one of our speakers shared a story that I had never really thought about, how crazy it was for the first astronauts to agree to do this, to be strapped to a rocket, sent out into space where no man had been before. And they were willing to take that risk because they were trusting that every person involved in building that rocket and designing that rocket had done their job. And one of the biggest quotes that I came away from that was, I'm going to make sure that my part works. And so as I engage and work in teams with teachers and on leadership teams and in the classroom, I think that's really inspiring and empowering to know that if everybody's doing their job well, then we're all going to succeed and, in this case, get home safe. So I wanted to wear my flight suit today to represent some of the lessons that I learned and that I'm bringing back to the classroom and to education in Nebraska in general. So this flight suit, to me, represents a feeling of adventure and being able to take risks. As I mentioned, in Finland, that was a big thing I took away, was taking risks in the classroom and trying new things and asking the questions, why not? Why not me? Why not here? Why not now? And that's kind of the attitude that I've entered into this school year with and that I want to carry throughout the rest of my career. And so far, we're in the beginning of October now. So in the first couple months of the school year, I've actually been able to get a couple of breakout boxes, Breakout E D U, which is an experience for students to engage in for problem solving and critical thinking. We've gotten three of those at Lincoln High. And I've also gotten a couple of drones at Lincoln High. So I've been able to use some of the connections that I made at Space Camp to gain some resources for my own school and my own students, which I hope will impact more from there. This is an email that I just got yesterday, and I wanted to share with you all because I think it's a really good illustration of what happens when one teacher is given the opportunity to experience some of the things that I've experienced, and then comes back empowered and excited to do these things. I lead a PLC, which is a professional learning community. And this is an email I got yesterday from one of my professional learning community teammates. And she shared how nervous she was to try a new strategy that we had talked about, but then she just did it. And she was really excited and wanted to share with the rest of the team how well this strategy had gone. And I think that's a perfect illustration of what happens when, again, one person experiences something, and then it spreads and spreads and spreads. So my mission moving forward is to just follow this path, and hopefully it becomes a cycle of teachers becoming empowered to try new things, to be innovative, to take risks, to learn and grow, and to try new things in their classrooms, which then leads to students learning and growing and being engaged and excited in the learning that they're experiencing. So I want to thank you all so much from the bottom of my heart for letting me experience the things I have this year. And I really hope to use those experiences and the lessons that I've learned to continue to impact education here in Nebraska.
Amber.
On behalf of the rest of the board, thank you so much for--
Microphone.
Yeah. It's that, if you want to help me with that technology thing, you can. But on behalf of the board, thank you for giving up a year away from your students and your family, it sounds like a lot, in order to experience these things. But in listening to you present, I feel very secure in the fact that you are going to continue to do things like this in your classroom, and your students will certainly benefit. So thank you so much.
Yes, thank you.
Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you.
We will move back to item 2.3, Ryan.
So last month, I brought before you the NASB delegate packet. I know that there are members of this board attending the NASB Annual Conference in November. And as being members of that organization, there is some business to conduct within that organization. And so that is attached in Spark. And if we could bring it up here, what's on this computer? There's three things that I want to point out to you from that agenda for the Delegate Assembly at the NASB meeting, which is on the Friday afternoon of that annual conference. Each state, member state, has the opportunity to appoint a delegate. I think President Tim will have that discussion at some point about who the delegate will be to represent the Nebraska State Board of Education. There are a number of matters of business here, but I'll draw your attention to, maybe I'm not on the right page.
What page is that?
It's page four. Roman numeral seven here, the Report of the Public Education Positions Committee in Adoption of New Public Education Positions. In this packet, those position statements are found there. And so once that delegate is appointed, I encourage you to review that and give your input to the delegate as to how you would wish for that delegate to vote. You will note that our own Dr. Wise is the Chair of that committee, and we'll be bringing that before the Delegate Assembly. The next Roman numeral item, Adoption of Revisions to the NASB Bylaws. There are what I would call minor bylaw changes there. Again, I'd encourage you to review those, give your input to your delegate as to how you would like for them to represent you as a member state. And then Roman numeral nine is Election of the NASB Chair-Elect. And I'd point out that Dr. Wise is on the ballot for that. And so, again, having that communication with your delegate, those are what I would say are the three major items of business that are on that agenda. But again, I encourage you as members of this organization to review the business of that and to give your input to the delegate. So I'll turn it back to President Tim if there's further discussion on this item among the board members.
Thank you. Well, first of all, we want to thank Rachel for putting forth her name. We wrote her a glowing recommendation for nomination several months ago. And we have had someone from the past, and in fact, from Rachel's district, Bev Peterson was also President-elect and then served as president for a year. So I think that really shows how active Nebraska is nationally in what we're doing. So thank you, Rachel, for doing that. We do have several people going. And Molly, you have been on governmental affairs for several years, and I would like to appoint you as the representative at Delegate Assembly because you've had some past experience in the bylaws and the things that go on at NASB. And I know you will support Rachel.
Yeah.
It would be my honor. Thank you. Thank you. Now, does anyone have any questions of Ryan or what goes on from now on with this? Thank you, Molly, for doing that. And thank you, Rachel, for your support. Okay. Thanks, Ryan. Maureen, will you please report on the AQUEST Teaching and Learning Domain Committee meeting?
I will. Our committee met this morning, and we had a lot of good conversation. We had two discussion items on the agenda. We have no action items for this month for the board to act on. The committee received information from staff on the progress related to defining civic readiness. And the committee had recommendations for the staff, and the staff will bring back the topic to the committee next month for further discussion to, for us to perhaps hopefully bring it back to the full board then. The second item of discussion, Proposed Revisions to Agriculture, Food, and Natural Resources Standards, and the Skilled and Technical Sciences Standards. The committee received information from the staff on the process timeline, input and feedback, and the proposed standards. And the committee, we've asked Katie Graham to share a summary. I think Cory's going to do it, of the information with the board for all of you to hear. So Cory?
Ryan, hey, that was the board. Denise? We have, based on the conversation this morning, an updated document that's also in eMeetings. I'm gonna, I'll bring it up on the screen as well. But for the record, Cory Uppler, Chief Academic Officer for NDE.
Crystal Knobby, Ag, Food, Natural Resources Career Field Specialist for NDE.
And Katie Graham is our Deputy State Director for Career Education, but she has a sick kiddo. So she went home to tend to Jonah this afternoon. So we hope that he's starting to feel better as well. We're in the process and continue the process of revising content area standards. And just for a little bit of context, a year ago was the first time that the State Board approved content area standards for career and technical education areas. And last year was Family, Consumer Science, Education and Training, and Communications and Information System. And so we've been working on a process to revise and update to career field areas, agriculture, food, and natural resources, as well as skilled and technical sciences. Before I talk about a few things, I realize that we have new board members, and I'm putting up the Nebraska Career Education model on the screen to help understand a little bit about, briefly, career education in our schools. So primarily, career education is offered at the high school level. And in terms of standards, they are course-based standards that reflect our six career fields, which our career fields are the six different colors in the center of this model. Within that, we have career clusters, which reflect the national career clusters. So there are 16 of those. You'll notice, I mentioned the three areas we approved last time. So Communications and Information Systems is the purple. We looked at, and you approved, Education and Training Career Cluster, which is over here in the blue, as well as Human Sciences and Family and Consumer Sciences, which is also in the blue. So now we're working in the green with Ag, Food, Natural Resources, as well as Skilled and Technical Sciences, which include transportation, distribution, manufacturing, energy, and engineering, as well as architecture and construction. So I offer that brief context to help further clarify the work that we're doing, which is a little bit different than K-12 content standards, for example, what we voted on last month with the science standards. So the process to revise both of these career field areas started with employers. So as we think about career education in Nebraska and ensuring that students have an opportunity to learn knowledge and skills that are needed for employment in Nebraska's leading industries. So thinking about that specifically, that was the group that both Ag, Food, Natural Resources, and Skilled and Technical Sciences engaged in the beginning. We ask employers to think about what do they want, what skills do they expect their employees to have in these particular areas? And from there, it became a backwards mapping. If we think, these are the skills and knowledge that are needed for employment in Nebraska's leading industries, how do we transfer that into standards and indicators that would be taught at the high school level? One of the things that's different about these courses is that we are looking at the development of standards within what we call a program of study. So a program of study is a sequence of at least three high school-level career education courses in a specified area. So the program of study includes an introductory course, an intermediate course, as well as a capstone course. A program of study not only includes the courses, but we talk more broadly about what are the work-based learning experiences, the workplace experiences. And often, the completion of a program of study will set a student up for success and entrance into a post-secondary institution, a community college, a trade school, or onto a university or state college, but also the possibility of a work, industry credential. So ensuring that those are built within the programs of study as well. I put an example in this document because, again, I think that phrase, program of study, Crystal and I have backgrounds in CTE, so that phrase is familiar to us. But I wanted to show an example of a program of study. So a student has an opportunity to take one of two courses as an introductory, then they move into an intermediate course, and then they have a capstone course as well. And you can see there are options within this program of study. So the standards, again, are much different in terms of, at the secondary level, they're grouped by a program of study. And then what we'll do is we'll be able to take them and put them into particular courses as well. Through that, so after the Business and Industry Input Meetings, our writing team, which was made of educators, developed the standards based on the expectations from employers, and then continuing revision and refinement based on feedback. And that feedback would be from our educators, from public, as well as our own internal feedback. Now, we're going to be completely transparent as we talk about public input, and we talked about that this morning and a lot. And to be quite honest, we don't have a lot of public input around these particular standards. I will emphasize that we followed the same process to collect public input that we did with the science standards. So for the science standards, we had a survey that had over 700 responses. We engaged media, we engaged social media, we had information out to our teachers. With our career and technical education, that level of interest was not present at this point. I will say it's not for lack of trying. One thing I think that is different is that these standards are 912 as opposed to K-12. And I noted that not all districts offer these programs. So not every school district in Nebraska has an Ag, Food, Natural Resource program at the high school level. Same thing with Skilled and Technical Sciences. So again, we certainly recognize that there's opportunity to improve that. I will note that the Skilled and Technical Sciences survey is still open. That was open a little bit later than we had anticipated, just for a few unforeseen circumstances. But we're still collecting input on both of those particular areas. Just a few key changes, as we think about what's different from these standards to the legacy standards, we really wanted to focus on increasing rigor of the standards and the content that's expected within the programs of study, but also ensuring alignment to workforce expectations. So if we think about the purpose of career education in our school districts, we want to make sure that our students leave those experiences with knowledge and skills necessary for employment in those areas. We were really intentional about working to ensure that we embed workplace experiences. I know in Ag, Food, Natural Resources, there's been a national effort really to think more intentionally about their work-based experience, supervised agricultural experience programs, and also an intentional integration of Nebraska's career readiness standards. The other thing I'll note, and we talked about this in the committee this morning, is that as we hear about career academy programs, to really emphasize that these programs of studies support the development of career academy programs within school districts. We do have Rule 47, which is the Career Academy Rule, that was approved several years ago. And one of the requirements of a Rule 47 Career Academy program is to include a state-approved program of study. So there is a very clear linkage between the work that we're doing with these standards and those programs of study and the growth of career academy programs. And I'll note that Crystal is our Career Academy Coordinator for NDE. So she has a good pulse of what districts are offering career academy programs. And it's exciting that we're actually collecting data around that. We actually had a data request this morning from a person who wanted to know which districts are offering which career academy programs. And hey, we can actually provide that to them. So that's pretty exciting. So our intent moving forward is that certainly this is a discussion item this month, and our hope would be that we would be back next month seeking approval of the State Board for standards in these particular content areas. And if you have specific questions, Crystal will be able to answer the ag content questions. Tony Glenn is our Career Field Specialist for Skilled and Technical Sciences, and he is out on the road working with teachers today.
Okay. So anyone have any questions? Molly?
I do know in Western Nebraska, agriculture has changed so much, and we're having fewer people on the farms doing the workforce because advancements in technology. But I wanted to compliment you on this agribusiness model. You're really involving all the technical and science standards and integration-- You're really involving all the technical and science standards in integration, and I just wanted to say I really appreciate that. Because I think a lot of people don't realize that agriculture is far more than just crops. It's about soil and understanding the climate and sustainability. And even if you don't like to get your hands dirty, agribusiness is hugely important for our state. So it's nice to tell you, thank you in person.
Thank you.
Rachel?
And I too applaud the work that you're doing and the direction you're going. And I just feel like it's important to bring up one other issue that comes into play, and that's the teacher shortage that's there. And I know there's been an expansion of Ag programs across the state, and that's still a challenge with finding teachers for the Ag programs, but as well as the skilled technical areas. So, you know, that's, I think, one of the challenges that we need to continue to put on our forefront as a state board. How will we ensure that there are qualified teachers for these very important program areas?
Thank you. Anyone else? Patrick?
Well, not lack, no. I'll still contend that we need to do a better job of reaching out to parents, I think we really need to do. With that said, in looking at your writing team, I'm impressed with your writing team, that you had so many people from outside of academia on that writing team. I think that's very important, and I appreciate the fact that you did that.
Thank you. John?
Thank you. Cory, quick question for you, if I could dovetail off what Rachel's question. Wayne State and UNL, are they still the primary, or if only, if you will, institutions for career tech producing teachers?
It depends on content areas. So for Ag Food Natural Resources, UNL is the sole teacher preparation institution. In terms of Skilled and Technical Sciences, there is, UNL has recently stepped back into that, as well as Wayne State. I do know that the UNK Transitions to Teaching Program does also include some teachers specifically within these content areas as well.
I was just wondering if we're growing on that. I know the emphasis has been for universities to, if you will, go that direction. Just wonder if we're going any progress.
Well, and Crystal would be able to speak to the number of folks in the pipeline, so...
We're not expanding what universities and colleges are offering that program, but we are increasing the number of graduates we're seeing. So between December and May this year, from UNL, we'll have approximately 30 in Ag alone. So we'll have a surplus this year in the state. And then we're seeing that between 20 and 25 for next year, and that number seems to be pretty steady for the next two years after that. So Ag has definitely came a long ways in preparing enough teachers, that we're starting to see our surrounding states tap into UNL and see who they can recruit out of our state to fill their needs. STS, I can't speak to as much, but Ag definitely is supplying the numbers needed.
Outstanding. Thank you.
And I would say the growth of Ag, and I appreciate that, I attribute it to some of the work that Career Education has done in terms of revision, where there's been intentional connection to workforce needs. So as we're working in local communities, and they see that the number-one work, the driver of the economy is in Ag Food Natural Resources, and there's no Ag Food Natural Resources Program in their high school, they see that disconnect. So I think as we continue to showcase economic priorities and how we can grow our workforce in Nebraska, some of these programs will start to really expand.
Rachel?
And just to follow up, thank you, John, for bringing up Wayne State College as well in my neighborhood. I think we need to applaud Wayne State and what they are trying to do. And they did receive funding from the legislature to build a facility. And the intent of that facility is to really create a comprehensive training program in the career and technical education areas. And they are one of the few areas providing our STS and industrial technology teachers. And I think it would be important for us, and I think Commissioner, since you serve on that, like Board of Trustees thing or something, to really monitor and follow to see if that investment that's been made by the legislature and the commitment that Wayne State has made does help us start to generate more teachers across the current tech ed areas.
Anything else? Maureen?
Well, as a result of the information that we have, the committee recommends this topic come before the committee at the November board meeting as an action item with anticipated approval by the board. And Madam President, that concludes my report. Molly, would you please report on the AQUEST Student Success and Access Domain Committee?
We only have one action item, and it's to grant the Commissioner the authority to approve the purchase of curriculum for center-based and family care home programs participating in the step-up to quality. And a little bit of the rationale is, we have found out that the use of a curriculum is an indicator of the quality developmentally appropriate early childhood ed. And we want to make sure it's research-based and appropriate, educating all developmental domains of young children. So the childcare providers who are participating will be encouraged to complete the grant application to receive this early child curriculum and training. And our, and our committee unanimously supports this action item.
Just a quick question, Molly. Do you, are they seeing more people come into the step-up to quality programs?
Yes, yes. Melody, in fact, said it's expanding, and the word is spreading, that it is productive for those participants, and also the young students are then more highly ready for kindergarten, which is our main goal, that they don't start out without learning gap.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions? And Molly?
Okay. I will report on the Policy Committee meeting. I think we're the ones that have all the action items this time. We have four. To approve the State Board Position Statement for digital, Nebraska Digital Education. And I don't see Doreen. Oh, there she is. The chair was, that happens a lot. You need to be taller. So.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm Duran Avi. I am the Digital Learning Director for the Nebraska Department of Education. We are bringing before you today, and I hope you have a copy, I'm sure you do, of our Board Position Statement for Digital Education. Some of the major highlights that we've made sure to include for those directive purposes and giving direction is the digital education definition, and clarifying what that includes, but not being too narrow, so that we leave room for the vast changes that occur in technology every day, so that we don't have to come back to this too soon. It does have support for development and implementation of statewide systems, so that we can get equity across the state of Nebraska and to all of our students and schools. It also supports quality infrastructure, broadband access, industry use of technology and data, and ensures, of course, privacy and security for all of our students. We have developed it so that the emphasis is in the bullets that you see at the beginning, and that kind of summarizes the details that you see following, and connects us to the future-ready initiatives that you'll be hearing more and more about in the coming months.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Duran? Rachel?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank you for a little bit of the reordering and really helping to make, in particularly, the first bullet pop on the student-centered approach and the personalized learning, so tying that to kind of that competency concept. So thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely.
Patrick? Did you have a question?
Yeah, as I look at the second page there, under, finally, the Board supports department's creation and implementation, you got a number of items listed, budget and resources, community partnerships, curriculum. It seemed to me, as I was looking at it, doesn't really, should there be something that says, address what districts need and want?
Those particular bullets come straight from the Department of Education's Future Ready, the National Future Ready Plan. So we listed those details, so that you would know the seven distinct gear groups that they've developed as a focus for districts to look at what they're doing currently and evaluate better where they could make improvements. They're all kind of interconnected, and there are components of that in each gear, kind of listed within, and then a leadership piece that kind of wraps around the whole part of it.
Not sure that that really deals with what I'm thinking, but, you know.
Well, perhaps between now and tomorrow, if you want to talk to Duran and to...
Yeah, I just have a sense that there needs to be more there.
Now, so Dean, can you maybe tomorrow, before tomorrow? Dean will visit with you. Molly?
I just wanted to quickly comment on the first page, the red line that you added, that was about incorporating the Personalized Learning Plan. Have you worked with, just by curiosity, have you worked with Westside Community Schools and their Personalized Learning Innovation Grant?
I haven't worked with them yet, but they are one of the innovation grant schools. And we do have a visit planned this month with them to see where they're headed and what tools they're using.
I just wanted to compliment you for the alignment with our strategic plan and the personal engagement. And hopefully, we'll get video transparencies and be able to replicate these personalized learning and for all our students. Thank you.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, we will move on. Thank you, Duran.
Thank you.
The next action item we will be bringing forth tomorrow is the Proposed Revisions to State Board Position Statement, five, formerly G-7. Did you know we're renumbering things? Expanded Learning Opportunities. And Jan, would you like to give just a little brief synopsis?
Thank you. I'm Jan Handa, and I'm the statewide coordinator for the 21st Century Community Learning Center Program. We fund after-school and summer programs, and then also administer the Expanded Learning Opportunity Grant Program, which is funded by 1% of lottery proceeds for opportunities happening after-school and in the summer as well. So this policy was created in 2013, and so as it's moving over to a position statement, we were given the opportunity to review it and propose some revisions. So we reached out to stakeholders, we shared this document with the statewide after-school network beyond school bells. They have a leaders group, and I shared this with them. All of our 21st Century Directors reviewed it and had a chance to weigh in and offer their input. And what you'll see here in the red text is what we are proposing that we add to this position statement. We definitely felt we needed to add the administration with the sound management and well-developed systems, because that's just really the backbone of a successful at-a-school-time program. And then, at the time the original policy was created, AQUEST did not exist. So we wanted to make sure we were adding a couple of additional principles to pick up the tenants of AQUEST that were not in that original policy. So college career awareness and readiness, as well as that second bullet from the end, we added the support during transitions, because after-school programs, that's one of the real strong tenants that an after-school program can address, where, for example, an elementary student might be in an after-school program and have a very consistent staff they work with over the course of their elementary years, and they can be very helpful in those transitions between grade levels or between buildings, moving from elementary to middle and so on. The only other revisions, the prior policy was kind of in just a random order for these various principles, and we alphabetized them so that it would just be, make sense, and also that we weren't trying to insinuate one thing is more important than another, where, you know, alphabetically, safety, health, and wellness comes last, but that's obviously one of our very top qualities we want to see in a program. So we alphabetized the list. And then we, on the second page there, you'll see the cross-references, and we added the citations out of the ESA statute that authorizes 21st Century Community Learning Centers, the state statute that authorizes the Expanded Learning Opportunity Program. And then these elements were adopted from the After-School Alliance. They have done a lot of research in after-school.
Any questions? Molly?
I wanted to highlight one avenue of expanded learning that I just was more aware of today. John Whistle talked about the military students in transition, and how important expanded learning is for the classes that are gapped. And so I wanted to thank you for really, John, for you including that in our discussion and bringing that to light. And I wanted to share that with our other board members, how expanded learning really plays a role in equity and access.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Jan.
Thank you.
That will be brought forward tomorrow. Our third note is the Policy Committee is recommending to postpone the approval of our State Board Position Statement S-13, and this involves the model policy to encourage the educational success of pregnant and parenting teens. This won't be discussed today, and it won't be an action item tomorrow, and it's anticipated to be an action item on the November agenda. And our last action item is to adopt a resolution regarding Nebraska veterans, with Veterans Day coming up. This presentation will be made at the Board Business Meeting tomorrow, and was brought forth as a resolution by Lisa Fricki. Our third, or our discussion items, the Policy Committee completed a four-year review of State Board Bylaw B-20, and this has to do with the school board associations that we belong to. And that will have some proposed revisions for approval at the November meeting. And Patrick, did you have a question?
No, are you gonna do 3B?
My list isn't, yeah, I am. Yeah, I haven't got there yet. That's the next thing. My report doesn't follow this. I did action items first and then discussion items. And we did have scheduled four-year review of Board Policy B-7, formerly D-8, on teaching certificates. And those proposed revisions will be brought forward at our work session next month and then brought to the board. And if you have questions prior to that, please see me, and we'll see what you would like to have.
Yeah, I do have a question that I'd like to visit with you about.
Okay. All right. That'd be great. Okay. Now, Rachel, we'll move on. Would you like to report on the Legislative Committee?
I would be delighted to report on the Legislative Committee today. We...
Microphone?
Forgot. I don't know how to do that all the time. I am out of the habit. We had a lengthy discussion on several things moving forward, and one of those items was carried over from about two other meetings. And that was putting together a list of recommendations with our, thinking about our regulatory authority as it relates to interventions and support in reading and math. And so over the past couple of months, the staff has really pulled together in-depth information on what currently has been happening in, under our rules, as it relates to interventions and support in reading and math, and where there were gaps. And staff has proposed a host of recommendations that we think really look very good and help us move forward in our intentionality about supporting the needs of students, and particularly students who are maybe falling behind in reading and math and may need additional intervention. And so those recommendations will be going the next steps. They'll go to the Commissioner, who will review our recommendations, and then distribute those to the appropriate staff, who helped us see those in the first place, I'm guessing, is who the appropriate staff will be. And then those staff members will take the lead in starting the rule revision process. And so we're not bringing forward to you what our recommendations were, because you will see that in the rule-making process. And in that rule-making process, there may be, through input, some, you know, additional changes. But the intent is to really see that there's a presence throughout our regulatory authority of... of a focus on the improvement in interventions for supporting reading and math. That was our primary focus of discussion. And you'll probably see that over the next few months in that rulemaking process. Then we also had some continued discussion as a follow-up of the presentation from ESUs and a discussion on looking at our accreditation responsibility in Rule 84. And we'll be spending more time on that in November. And Madam Chair, we will probably be needing a little extra time. And I can talk to you about that for that committee discussion.
Okay, we'll look at the agenda.
Yep.
And I don't know, committee members, anything else to add from today's discussion?
Okay, that's it. Thank you. Brian, did you have anything else? Sorry. We got it. Okay, thanks.
Okay, our next item is a report on the Strategic Planning, Performance and Improvement Committee. And this is going to be really short. The Strategic Planning, Performance and Improvement Committee, we didn't have any discussion items or action items. We had some updates. And we will be bringing those items forward related to AQuest and some research priorities and the innovation grant program in future meetings. So Matt, do you have anything to add?
No, I do think one thing we discussed, we had some research items that I think are really quite impressive out of our data research and evaluation team that we will share with you all as board members so you can see some of that good work. But it actually starts to help inform us. The research projects they were looking at was ACT and dual, dual credit and AP. And I think you'll be very impressed by our team's work on that front. So we'll share that with you in advance so you have a chance to look at it before we present it to you in a more formal fashion.
Right. That'll be sent out electronically probably. Okay. Backing up. You don't want to go back again. Okay, John, budget and finance?
Thank you very much, Pat. Good afternoon. Tomorrow, we'll be asking the commissioner to authorize, authorize the commissioner to submit the department's deficit budget request in the Nebraska Budget Request and Reporting System. First of all, I'd like to give you kind of a briefing in regards to when we talk about deficit budget, just a little bit of a summary. And when submitting a deficit request, it is a process to allow agencies to ask for funding around items that could not have been known during the biennial budget process or other emergency funding issues that need to be addressed before the next biennial budget. We had five items that were, if you will, drawn down to three items that we'd like your approval on for tomorrow. One item is a deficit request for TOSA State Aid, which is to comply with the state statute. Another is the State Breakfast Match, match of a request of $107,000, which again is by state statute. The one item that is not by state statute is the Career Connections Contract. The committee this morning reviewed the original submission for the line item. And it has been changed accordingly with the grateful help from Bryce Wilson and Shane Ryan in regards to, this will be the new read if I may. The committee agreed to submit as a deficit request the Career Connections Contract, which is under Cooter Incorporated for $225,000. This is the only request that is not required by the state statute, but was recommended based on the importance of this service. The Career Connections Program is the primary source for college and career planning and is currently used by 220 schools as well as several state agencies. This program is a critical part of the board's plan to ensure every student has a personal learning plan, which is part of the board's strategic plan goals. This contract was jointly funded in the past by the Department of Labor, DHHS and NDE, but is now solely funded by NDE. Without appropriations for the Career Connections Contract, NDE will have to decide if this program can be funded going forward, starting on the 2018-19 school year. If not funded by NDE, schools will have to find programs that offer similar services, which range from anywhere from $1,000 to $2,500. Total cost for school districts across the state could exceed $500,000. And many of the issues that we looked at originally on the, if you will, proposal, the item was guidance counselors in regards to the, if you will, the responsibilities of the guidance counselors now in regards to, there are many responsibilities. This would just help them more. And in regards to savings for the schools, which is pretty obvious. And also assist with our career tech education. But there was many, many issues involved in this decision. But we, with those changes made, we would like to recommend we go forward with these three. Any, yes ma'am?
When I originally read this earlier, this is really, really important, this Career Connections. And I would hate to see it go as a last resort if we don't have the funding to keep it. Would it be appropriate maybe to charge each district, you know, $500? This is only if it can't be done. It's still a lot cheaper than them doing it on their own. I don't understand the budgeting of this. I don't want to hurt any schools, but I also don't want it to be taken away because it's such a benefit for so many thousands of kids. So could that be a last resort option? And I think I forgot to turn on my mic. Sorry. Oh, good.
Rachel, did you have, want to comment on that?
Yeah, I, Lisa, I concur. And I think your remarks are spot on on the importance of career connections and the resource that it is. I think we need to advocate how it's not efficient to create a process. We would probably spend more money in creating a process to charge schools and set up a whole process. That for me, it's, it adds then a level of bureaucracy and cost rather than understanding there are some kinds of things that we should be purchasing statewide to help support our schools. It's the same as what we've done with assessment. You know, we created a value-added process by our ACT, by the way we're moving with NWA and MAP being available to our schools. I think we have to be strategic, which is what I believe your committee has done. And we have to advocate for how we should support schools and create those value-added processes. And I think this is a good example of we need to really work hard in our advocacy for state funding for this particular item.
Very good. Yes, Molly?
Do you think this was just an oversight, these three areas?
No, no, I think they were just unexpected, Bryson, unexpected during the biennial process.
Yeah, maybe Bryson Chang can kind of walk you through a little bit of the deficit process just generally. It's, this is not an unusual process for us, but it does only hit us once a year. So it might be good to have that.
And when it happens, if we have rationale why this investment will actually save money and increase student achievement, are they generally pretty supportive of adjustments?
It depends. That's always an it depends answer. I'll let them explain some.
They're always more supportive when they have a good fiscal year going on. Not bad fiscal years. But I would just say is the deficit budget request process in and of itself is a process for, as John mentioned, it's the things that we didn't know about or maybe even made a request on this one during the biennial budget request. But we have to request again because we didn't get funding or something came up that we didn't know about. When we do the biennial budget request, we start that process a year and a half before the fiscal year, before that biennial budget period even starts. So there are a lot of things that happen, you know, after that period. And so this is our one opportunity for them to allow us to ask for those appropriations to fund those emergency types of situations. So.
So if I could add on to that, Shane Ryan, Financial Services Director. We had an estimate for the insurance tax fund that contributes to TOSA, that it had a lower balance than what was estimated at the time of appropriation. So that $4 million is just to meet the amount certified out of general funds and comply with statute. That was an estimate from Legislative Fiscal Office that was just lower. The breakfast match has an appropriation amount. We served more breakfast than what was estimated when the legislature appropriated that amount. So this is just us coming back and saying, there were more breakfasts served. We need more money to comply with state statute. The third item was a deficit request actually last year. We took over this contract as fiscal agent from ESUCC. And we funded this out of department resources and indirect costs. And unfortunately, in the last legislative session, this deficit request was not approved by the legislature. And so we are circling back again, saying, we feel this is important. We have committed to fund this contract for the current year. But we will have to make a tough decision if we do not receive additional general funds from the legislature in the upcoming session.
It seems to me on the third contract, if you look down about three sentences, it's, it's part of that digital personalized learning plan. I mean, right here, it provides job-seeking assistance with resumes. And then the student can have electronic portfolio. And that's all about employability. And I think that the legislature and the governors have been very strong about, about making sure our kids graduate college career-ready. So I hope that your request goes well, John.
And I would just like to add, the piece, not to get lost in this on career connections, it's not just used by students, it's used by adults.
Correct.
And in the past, there has been funding through DHHS and Department of Labor.
And economic development.
As part of it. And so they may not be providing funding, but adults are still using.
And it's VR too.
So, you know, I think that's what's important in the messaging around this particular tool.
I think we also asked that you provide some additional commentary, I think, when this goes to the governor and the, you know, as far as there is a savings to the school districts, it appears. So if you're balancing $225,000 with the state as opposed to maybe 300 or 350, you know, we need to, we need to be able to articulate that, obviously. But, you know, going back, just as you pointed out, there weren't, you asked for these funds last year and they weren't provided. And the department found the resources to pay for them. And hopefully, and my guess is it won't be funded this year, but hopefully the department will find the resources to continue this if necessary.
I'll just add to that because there's kind of been a long history of trying to build partnerships around this. So we'll continue to do that work and look, look for potential partners. I will somewhat reiterate, sometimes when we build state systems that actually support all of our schools, I actually think it makes sense that the state would provide those systems. And we've made that argument in this case. I think we'd make it, make it even a stronger argument based on what I heard out of the committee recommendations. So we'll certainly try that. There are other things that, and other possible partnerships, I think, in the long run that help bring this together. But if we lost this core piece, I would be concerned about our ability to kind of recreate that. And that, that's my concern, I think, and why we have it and why I felt strong that it should be on this list as well. So thank you for your consideration of it.
Yeah, Molly?
This helps, I know we frequently read in the news about the correctional institutions where people are not employed and then recidivism is high and they go back to our incarceration. So this Career Connections Contract works to provide career pathways for them too.
The adult portion.
Incarcerated people and Department of Labor. Seems like you would have other advocates in the room for this funding.
Thank you, Molly. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. All right, John, would you like to proceed on the commissioner's appraisal committee meeting? And then we'll take a break.
This morning, the committee met and we are in our planning stages for next year. And that's where we're at.
Well, that was a short report. All right. We'll take about a 10-minute break.
Do a nice job, it's a nice job, a chance to intersect with local board members. And I, I do think, I'm gonna piggyback on Molly's comment earlier today. I do think if we can encourage more sessions that help connect to the regulatory process accountability, I think that would be really helpful for local board members. And that's not to take away from the agenda that's put in place. And, you know, the sessions I went to are very good, and I think very helpful for board members.
Mm-hmm.
But if there's a way, I know, I think the first year that I went, we had a little bit of a presence and did some presentations from the Department of Education. I think it would be of value to maybe reach out from the Department of Education to NASB. And then we did the one year where we did a, a quest across the, the board. But I think to try to have a annual presence of some things that are really burning your top issues for us would be of value to share with the regional meetings at NASB.
Okay. Molly?
One thing to piggyback on what Rachel is just discussing is they are requesting topics for discussion. And I think this new conversation that we had in strategic planning about the evidence-based analysis would be very good if we could talk as that evolves, maybe at the next year's meetings, area meetings. And then also besides the EBAs, just to really thank them for their local participation. I think sometimes local board members wonder if they really, you know, how they fit into the big scheme of things on the state level.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Anyone else go to any area meetings that weren't reported on? Molly?
I went to the Open Sky File Policy Forum.
Oh, we're just coming to that.
You may.
There were several people that went to the Open Sky, Rachel and Patsy and Molly. So Molly?
No, they can, they can start, I'll, I'll, I'll piggyback on the end.
Okay, all right. Patrick?
Um, well, I didn't, did it, oh, I'm sorry.
I, I did attend that meeting, you know, it seemed like a, a great deal of emphasis was put on incentives, I think. And, uh, I think there's some back and forth on, on whether incentives work legislatively, you know, statewide, whether they're taking money out of the, out of the budget or what. But, uh, obviously that's gonna continue to be an issue that's gonna be discussed across the board, so.
Okay, Rachel, did you, did you go to Open Sky?
Yes, uh, yeah, and I think I would concur with, with Patrick. I think every year, uh, Open Sky is interesting because it brings up some of the revenue challenges in the state to think about. And, um, you know, it, it gives you a, a different perspective to think about some of the, the challenges that are there. And so again, I appreciate what Open Sky does. I think, um, it's, it's good to continue to think about, though we don't have as much of a role in how we think about, um, funding schools. I think it's important for us to be engaged, to think about what our role can be. Because I think we can play a bigger role than we have been. And I think the direction we've gone with kind of a value-added concept, when you think about assessment and what we've done with assessment, when, just a discussion we just had on career connections, I think we, a, a, as an elected body, need to be thinking about, are there things that we can help contribute to the efficiencies within the state that clearly, you know, are, um, a major concern during this period of rev- revenue shortfall?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Okay. Molly, you attended?
Yeah, and Lisa too.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
Okay. The comment I was going to make about Open Sky that made me just open my eyes widely was when they were really showing demographics of our state and the baby boomers that are soon going to be on Medicare and the expenses related to, to many of our illnesses, related to obesity, tobacco-related illnesses. Then they showed, it was really neat because it was all statistical analysis. They showed then the number of young people in K-12 and how many of them are, the numbers are not what are retiring. And right now, we're flat-lined in our budget, and I looked at those numbers. And if you think the people are going to be dependent, what are we really doing to empower the K-12 students? And it goes back to what Rachel said, I think our role in the State Board of Ed is really to help maximize the resources we have to build, first of all, incentivized by student curiosity and engagement, just what am, what do I wanna do when I grow up? Make those connections for industry to your, for, for your college? But when I just hear talk about, we have to tighten our belts, well, if you're in a deficit, you have to build your economy to scale. And that's by getting people to move to Nebraska and building innovation and creativity. And so, let's keep pushing for expanding our tax base rather than just spending. It needs to be fiscally responsible, but it also has to build.
Yeah. Lisa?
Um, there were a lot of, like, wow moments. One of them was the guest speaker talked about, um, uh, groups coming to Nebraska, whether it's a business or organization, whatever, ninety-eight-two. You know, we think that, um, the incentives that we use to get these companies to our state are a big deal for them to make that decision. And he said, no, it's the ninety, ninety-eight percent is dealing with more the human side of it. You know, are they gonna have educated workers? Are they gonna have a good location? And it's more that ninety-eight percent, it's not those incentives which gave me an idea that we spend all this money, but they're coming here for this ninety-eight percent, not the two percent incentive. And it made me think that, um, maybe we're looking at a lot of these incentives in the wrong way, uh, that those resources could be used differently. Uh, we need to build that tax base in our state, and there are ways to do it. And, and we need to fund education at a much higher economic priority. Um, there were, I didn't even know there were three different ways to do TIP, you know? And so, there, it, it was just, uh, you know, a really informative, uh, session for me. And we just need to get going in Nebraska and set our priorities straight when it comes to education and funding what these kids need, so that they're educated and wanna stay in Nebraska and businesses come here because of the workforce base that's educated, that can take the jobs, you know, that these companies offer, so.
Anyone else?
Well, I was there as well, and I agree totally with Lisa. There were so many things that the keynote speaker had to say. But the, I think the most important thing that he said was about incentives. And what if we spent that same amount of money on things within Nebraska, trying to encourage somebody, you know, to come into Nebraska? Um, that money might be better spent with us deciding exactly where it goes. And I thought that was a, a big wow for a lot of people in the audience when he explained how it worked, so.
I agree. Now, I'm sure, uh, you've all been other places too, so does anyone? Maureen, do you have any place to, wanna tell us where you've been?
Nope, just went to Oregon for the game.
You're living a dull life, is it, are you telling me?
I think that's exciting.
Yeah, dullness is okay. Molly, do you have anything else?
No, I just want one question.
Patrick?
Okay, I, I think all, several of us had a chance to, uh, attend an event with, uh, with, uh, Secretary of Education Betsy DeVos. Uh, in our, my case, it was in Omaha, and it was at, um, Midland University's office in Omaha, where they educate about a, they've got about a hundred folks in attendance there. Uh, I thought Ms. DeVos was, was gracious and, and very engaged. Um, she sat with the, um, with the, the kids in the coding class. And I'll tell you what, I didn't understand a thing I was watching. I mean, but it took a lot of patience just to be in the room and stand there and listen for half an hour and think, I don't understand anything that she's talking about, or he's talking about, so. Uh, but I thought that was very useful, and I think it worked well for Nebraska, and I hope it wel- worked well for Nebraska. Also got to attend the Platte Institute, which is kind of the corollary, if you will, of Open Sky. And, uh, normally in both of these organizations, they're talking a lot more about educational bills. And neither one were really talking about educational bills this year. Um, Platte Institute was talking about personal property taxes and trying to reduce those, which would affect, would affect, I didn't say it would benefit, but would affect businesses and it would affect agriculture. Um, and I don't know where that's gonna go, but obviously they got an interest in pressing for that. And then, um, and that has an impact on the budget, and there's no money in the budget to fund most of these, these things anymore. So you gotta be kinda cautious. The other thing that was interesting, and I mentioned this, this morning, was, um, Senator Stenner's, uh, Bill six-eleven and the educa- uh, that was, uh, discussed. And, uh, that is really interesting because about thirty percent of the fund or the revenue Nebraska receives, total revenue, comes from the federal government. In our case, it's what, sixty percent or better, I think.
Agency, seventy-seven.
In our agency.
Seventy-seven?
Somewhere around there, yes.
So, but, um, you know, in lieu of what's happening nationally, if they're gonna, with a twenty trillion dollar bud- uh, debt, budget deficit, are the, are, are some of these grants gonna go away? We just talked about potentially losing ten million dollars in one grant this morning. And, um, and so Stenner's bill basically would say that it requires state agencies that receive money, operating mon- dollars from the state to, um, uh, set up, uh, operating plans in event the federal receipts are reduced by ten percent or twenty-five percent or more. And, uh, and a plan as to how you're gonna deal with those losses. Now, uh, our, our finance staff says a lot of that stuff is, and, and our, uh, and Brian says a lot of that's already somewhere in legislation. But this is a little bit more overt and it's a little bit more, uh, designed to be more transparent to some, I guess. But again, you know, whether they pass that bill or not, that's, uh, any, whether you're reducing personal pri- or you take away the sales tax and the personal property tax deduction at the state, or at the national level on your income taxes, that has an impact on Nebraska's budget, probably favorable if they don't change it. But in any event, I thought that was an interesting conversation. And again, there wasn't, wasn't a lot talked about education. And then I had the opportunity to, um, a little bit different, attend a Bellevue University function where Doris Kearns Goodwin spoke. And that was really interesting, and I, and I think the whole point, the, the, the thing you come away with, uh, even if I don't agree with her on every issue, is that it's so important, civic education is so important to our kids and, and, and the future of our country. So I, I thought that was really informative. I think that, uh, you could probably go hear her speech on, uh, on, on YouTube if you wanted to hear it, or majority what she had to say, but it was very interesting. And again, stressed the importance of civic education, so I think that's all I have.
Thank you. Lisa, did you have any place else you attended?
I had the honor to represent the State Board in giving Nebraska's, uh, History Teacher of the Year Award. And Mr. Hayes is from Millard West, and we surprised him. And he had a powdered colonial wig on and hat and, and, uh, he's an amazing teacher, and what really, um, I didn't know that till I was there. Um, Mr. Royers, who nominated him, was his former student. And so this former student, who was the Teacher of the Year, nominated this Teacher of the Year. And they've worked together as, you know, in collaboration for eleven years now. So I, I thought that was amazing, so great, great teachers. And then I went to the DeVos thing as well, she was very gracious. Uh, the one thing that I agreed with her on was the idea of getting kids college and career-ready. She did mention that, and I, and I thought that was very good.
Rachel, have you been anyplace else?
Oh, yeah, I got a list. I knew it, I knew it. And my colleagues over here, to my left, will add, uh, on Monday, we had the great opportunity to go to South Sioux City for the two thousand eighteen Teacher of the Year Awards. And Michelle Halt from Cardinal Elementary, third grade teacher from elementary, um, was the recipient of our two thousand eighteen, and you'll meet her next month. And it was a delightful experience.
Better third graders, we're pretty excited.
And it was nice that, that some of my colleagues came up to my neck of the woods. Some of my colleagues took a longer route, just saying, to get there than the director. But, um, it was a great celebration and, and certainly, certainly want to, um, recognize, uh, Michelle Halt. Um, then I also had an opportunity to go to Norfolk High Schools. They did a ribbon cutting for their new addition at their high school for their career academies. And they've really done some amazing work, and I think it started some from renovation, uh, renovation, revisioning process also that Corey mentioned earlier. And, uh, they're in their second year career academies. They started last year with four career academies and fifty students. They now have eight career academies and a hundred and fifty students. And they also celebrated that all of their career academies, um, were approved under the Rule forty-seven. And so that was a part of their celebration. So they did a ribbon cutting and a nice celebration. And they had kids recognized that were in the programs, and they talked about, uh, each of their academies a little bit. And what really was, I think, impressive about the visit to Norfolk is they did the addition to the building, um, through fundraising in the community. And one of the things that Superintendent Thompson shared with me that their first initial projections for the cost of the project went down once they had the business community involved because of some of the negotiations for various equipment and various elements that, uh, business community stepped up and helped with negotiations. That they got rates that they felt were better than they would've been able to negotiate on their own. So it was very impressive, uh, for Norfolk, and really wanna recognize what they were doing. Um, a small thing that I did that I, you know, now that it's about Rotary, and once in a while I get to Rotary, but, um, Superintendent Mark Shepard and Brad Dahl, who's the Executive Director for Business Services for Fremont Public Schools, did an outstanding presentation to Rotary on their budget process. And they did a really good job on giving examples that were understandable by a diverse, uh, community population and the handouts that they used, just I thought did a really nice job in explaining the strengths and challenges in the Fremont Public Schools budget. Um, then I also had the great opportunity to meet Secretary DeVos at Nelson Mandela Elementary. And, um, and John was there also, so you may comment on that. And I just think we have to give, um, recognition to Susan Tuohy, who is the Head Administrator for Nelson Mandela, and Diane Logier for her support of that, that school. And though it's a, a non-public school, it works very, very closely with Omaha Public Schools. Uh, it is, it's not a charter school, and there's no intention for it to become a charter school. Um, and I would describe it as almost a lab school sometimes, or an incubator of ideas that they're able to try and do. And they described one of the interventions they're doing right now that I think is, is amazing and that we should look at and determine how to replicate. And that's, uh, using a combination of speech pathologist, an occupational therapist, and maybe a special ed teacher, I can't remember who else in the team, to really be intentional about interventions and developmental delays, cognitive delays, social and emotional delays, and intervening early as opposed to what we do right now with special education. Uh, and Mark was there also, so you could probably speak to that a little bit. But really, I think a great concept for us to think about and maybe replicate or encourage replication in other, other areas. Um, then I also met with Peggy Reischer, I believe that's how it's pronounced. She's the Executive Director for the Brain Injury Alliance, and Sharon Royer. And Sharon Royer is a retired principal from Omaha Public Schools in Indian Hills. I believe she serves on the Board of, um, the Alliance, I think is part of the connection. But they just wanted to share, uh, information about some of the work they've done with surveying schools on how they're addressing issues related to brain injuries and to concussions. And, um, did a lot of information on the return to learn and bridging the gap from concussion to classroom. And I think my takeaway, um, was we need to think about that in context of, um, all students and not just athletes. That we maybe focused much more on athletes, uh, and I think probably doing a better job in particularly with our, um, football players than thinking about it in context to students in many elements that suffer a concussion and/or a brain injury and the kinds of things that should happen to help that student be more successful. Something that might be, uh, worth a presentation for the whole Board at some point, so.
Okay. Patsy?
Well, I had a busy month, and, um, I'll start out by connecting to your Rotary, um, thing. I left yesterday, uh, very quickly, right after I was in surgery. I ran over to Elliott, um, Elementary, um, to pass out dictionaries and to little fourth graders. And I have to say that I watched a teacher, I, I got there early, that's amazing. And, um, the fourth grade teacher was teaching math. And so I got to go and sit with all of the kids and watch this fourth grade teacher. And, um, if you ever wanna be amazed by education, just go into a classroom and sit down. And that's exactly what I did. The dictionaries were great, and I was proud to pass them out, but I was more proud to see that I was a teacher and that the young lady was a teacher as well. Um, I went to the Teacher of the Year event as well, and I was a past Teacher of the Year. Um, I felt that same feeling that I know she felt, I, she wrote me a note. But you're like, yay, I'm gonna be the Teacher of the Year. Oh, I'm going to leave my classroom. Oh, no, what will I do with my family? And so I went up to her and assured that everybody would live through it, and she would, she would be fine. Um, I was super proud to attend Tedx Lincoln and to watch our Commissioner present a speech on education, and Lisa was with me. And we were so proud of our fearless leader and what he had to say about education. And I wanna thank you for taking that risk. I did that once upon a time in two thousand and twelve, and it's the most fearful thing that I've ever done in my life. Um, another thing that I think was really great is that I attended Seeds of Hope, and I was too busy to attend it in my own district, so I attended in Omaha. And it, another reason to be proud of what our Nebraska schools are doing with immigrant students and to be proud of Nebraska Loves Public Schools, who puts that kind of material for us together so that we can look in a mirror and say, yes, indeed, we are doing great things for our kids. Um, I visited also with, um, Eric Drumiller from EduQuest. And I have to say that I did not realize all of the things that EduQuest does for kids who are getting ready to go to school clear across our state. And I asked him if he might sometime request to come here and speak to us. And so, if he does, it's my fault, but, uh, I, I think you'll enjoy it. And I think you'll, uh, find out that there are, they do amazing things as a nonprofit organization to our state and all of the kids in Nebraska. I spent some time at LPS, um, trying to learn more about this job that I'm doing. And, uh, I visited Liz Standish and talked to her about school funding and where the money comes from and how that happens, school finance. And, um, she's amazing and taught me a lot very quickly. And I'll probably go back for more, for another course. Uh, she also gave me a list of all my principals in my district because, um, I've said to a couple of you, I have a goal of going to see every single school in my district before I'm done with this job. And we'll see how I do. I've been going a little bit at a time, but I wanna do even, even more. Um, because of my interest in early childhood, I've been to every Buffett, um, meeting that they've had. I also met with Michelle Suarez to talk about early childhood. She's a past teacher, and she's a major leader in early childhood in Nebraska. And so I wanted, I wanted to know more and more and more about that and what we can do as a State Board, um, to help children from birth through sixteen.
Right.
Also spent some time with John Spotts, and, um, I want you to know proudly, I announced that he is, uh, in full agreement with me, uh, when it comes to STEAM. So I was very happy to hear that. And, um, I, I think another proud moment for me with, um, Nebraska education was with Betsy DeVos. And I wanted to, uh, leave her to last. And that was, I was so proud of the Focus School, the youth school in Lincoln, Nebraska, and how they represented all of the schools in Nebraska, um, for us. Uh, they were, the teachers were teaching just like they teach every day, and you could tell that by the answers that the kids gave. And the students, um, were very concerned, um, politically and asked appropriate questions. And, um, everybody did a really good job of, of representing Nebraska. There's a few other things, but if you guys stop there, it was, it was a great month for me. I did a lot and had, I had a great time doing it.
And they had surgery.
And that's why I've got these glasses on, I'm not trying to look really smart, it's that I can't see a thing yet.
John?
Thank you very much. First thing I gotta say is, how about Dundee Elementary School, Blue Ribbon School?
Yes.
Got to be congratulated, so Dundee, well done.
And Pender, I have to, I, Pender Elementary, you can go, we're going in my neighborhood too.
Also, uh, Rachel, I had the, uh, honor of attending the Latino Destino Celebration with the, uh, Latino Center. Uh, also, Lisa and I were invited to the Patriot Day at the SAC Museum just recently. We met also with the Sherwood Foundation the following day. Had the opportunity to attend the Metro Community College ribbon-cutting ceremony for their new technical center. That was quite a facility, and, uh, so thank you very much, uh, Metro, for that. Also, I attended the Bellevue University, uh, Dr. Goodwin Presentation. That was an extremely well-done event, uh, lots of people, but a good message. I mean, it just went by really quick. Attended the Bellevue Chamber of Commerce Awards Dinner. Uh, also was able to, uh, attend the Collective for Youth, uh, event held at UNO. Fourteen hundred students in the, in the field house, and it was led off by Mark Evans and Bob Whitehouse. And very proud to attend with them. But also, I'd like to thank our friends at Bellevue Public Schools, Dr. Rippey and Maureen McNamara, for all the information they gave me in regards to working to transfer students and, uh, some of their procedures and history to go along with it. And so, thank you very much.
Good, thank you, thank you.
You are just the busiest bunch, I tell ya.
Um, okay, we will move on to, um, our requested, uh, travel. And my gosh, some of you people are organized. We have people requesting travel in two thousand eighteen, which is just amazing. I don't always know what I'm going to do tomorrow. Uh, but anyway, I believe you have the list on your computers as to the requests. Um, lots of requests this fall, um, now that we're into October. Um, and, uh, so I ask you to look through those, uh, we'll be voting on those tomorrow. And, um, we have, like I said, we have several things that people are already planning ahead into, um, twenty eighteen as to, um, things. And if anybody has any additional, uh, requests, would you see that Ryan or Laura get them before tomorrow? Patrick?
Just a question, on the, uh, uh, Atlanta Conference, we've got five people going.
Mm-hmm.
And three are going to be paid for by NASB?
Yes.
Okay, and two, the other two will be financed?
Yes.
Okay, so we're, we're following our policy?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Uh, you also have the monthly, uh, travel expense report attached for you to review. And, um, anybody else have anything for the good of the order? Lisa?
Um, I think Patsy might agree with me. It, it makes me really proud just to hear the experienced Board members. When they talk about where they've been, they're actually giving us a lesson in what's possible. And you've been great mentors to us, and I know it means a lot to me, and Patsy and I have talked about it. So, um, we appreciate. a lot to me, and Patsy and I have talked about it. So we appreciate that so much. So, keep mentoring.
And I want to say that I agree with that 100%. I know she said it, but I'd like to say it for myself, too. And thank you for always asking or answering dumb questions and giving us the motivation to keep going. Thank you.
Well, as long as I have been here, the dumb questions don't go away. I still have them. So don't ever be afraid to ask a question. Okay, well, if that's it, the regularly scheduled meeting of the State Board of Education will reconvene tomorrow morning at nine o'clock in this room. Thank you.